Thank you, Kara, as well. All right, moving on, we have a briefing today, Denver zoning code text amendment number seven to update the way code regulates households consolidate. But, okay, I'm not going to read the whole thing. We're gonna have a group living briefing. So what I'd like to do, Andrew Webb, I see you in queue, we're going to, you'll do a briefing. Andrew, how long do you think you're going to need for the briefing?
I think the slide deck itself, I can go through and say fifteen to twenty minutes, hopefully, and then I have plenty of extra slides that we can go back to if we need to.
Yeah, if you could, if you could keep that at twenty, that would be great. So that would give us over an hour to go through questions and comments. I'm sure we're gonna get a lot. Oh, and I want to welcome Councilwoman Sandoval. I just see you, I saw Vice Chair just popped up. So, all right. So Andrew, you can go ahead and introduce yourself. Take it away, colleagues.
You're muted, sir.
Chris, you've been muted.
I apologize, I pushed the wrong button. I don't know, last thing that was heard, welcome, Councilwoman Sandoval. Andrew, if you could take twenty minutes, that'd be great. And colleagues, I know everyone's gonna have questions, so I will get through, I will start writing down names. But Andrew, introduce yourself, you can take it away.
Great, thanks, everyone. Again, Andrew Webb from Community Planning and Development. Can you all see the presentation on screen right now?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So, yeah, so for the last two and a half years, I've been the project manager for this effort to update the Denver zoning codes regulations on residential uses of all types. What I'll be outlining briefly here in these slides is a set of CPD recommendations for updating the zoning code, informed by volunteer advisory committee, agency partners, elected officials, and many other stakeholders who have participated, with a goal of implementing our adopted city goals for inclusive and affordable housing, addressing problems, either that have been known for a long time in the zoning code or that were identified through the course of the project, including things like outdated language and unpredictable permitting and notification requirements that have resulted from years of amendments to the code. So just briefly, I want to talk a little bit about our, when I say implementing our adopted plans, one of those plans is Blueprint Denver, which does set forth a lot of language about equity, as I know we've all talked about quite a bit. As it relates to housing, I just wanted to highlight a few key points. So when referencing housing, what we mean when we say equity is, again, flexible, affordable housing in neighborhoods that offer all of residents' daily needs, reducing vulnerability to displacement, so things like allowing people to choose to live with whoever they want to, for families to share housing if they would like to, and increasing the options for the city's most vulnerable populations in residential care type uses, and then generally expanding the diversity of housing types. Next few slides are just a short history of some of the regulations, especially as they pertain to household regulations, which I know has been of particular interest in this project. So when Denver first adopted zoning, and many American cities were doing the same thing at this time, they were, you know, aiming to encourage an orderly pattern of uses that separated residential and industrial and manufacturing uses, and led to the orderly development of the city. The resident or the regulations for individual households were fairly flexible, as essentially anybody who lived and made meals in a premises was considered a household, and there was not any specific recommendations, regulations about who could live there. But thirty years later, reflecting a nationwide post-war trend toward adopting more narrow definitions of family, that definition had tightened up, and we had started to really get specific about who was allowed and who would not be allowed to live as a household in single-unit neighborhoods. By the late nineteen sixties, that had gotten even more specific, to the point at which no unrelated people could live together, only husband and wife and their relatives. That changed in nineteen eighty-nine, when the city did adopt a change to the zoning code allowing up to two unrelated people to live together, going back to the way it had been prior to the nineteen fifties, in a vote that made national news, actually, and reflects that, you know, how challenging some of these discussions can be. And we modernized that a bit to move away from some of the gender-neutral language in twenty eighteen. So meanwhile, while the single-unit use regulations have gotten much more restrictive, the regulations for multi-unit uses have stayed pretty much the same, that the definition upon adoption of the first zoning code was the same as any other residential use of people who chose to live together and who did their cooking and lived on the premises. In nineteen fifty-four, this was changed to five or fewer unrelated individuals, and that was reduced to four later down the road. So that means that people who do not live in a traditional family, or families who choose to live together, or just simply unrelated people who choose to live together, only have options of living in apartments and multi-unit type uses, units that are, on average, half the size of most of the actual detached houses in Denver. This is similar for residential care uses, especially for those uses that serve some of the city's most vulnerable populations. The slide shows where you could currently establish a new community corrections facility in Denver, as you can see, that's limited primarily to industrial areas along the plat and in most Denver, where some of the people who we expect will be eventually transitioning back into community are kept in industrial areas away from opportunities for employment and daily needs like shopping, transit, that sort of thing. So these proposed changes would do several things to address these problems and to implement our adopted plans. That includes consolidating all of the residential care uses into a single-use type, and regulating by size with spacing and density limitations for larger facilities, as is currently the case, but moving away from identifying specific populations and relegating them only to industrial areas of the city. Would allow residential care uses in more places, especially community corrections uses. Require community information meeting prior to permit application for larger residential care facilities. This is a, would be a new requirement. The city council adopted this last year for large development review, and we would be establishing that same requirement for residential care, resulting in a mail notification and a public meeting held prior to zoning application, zoning permit application for those larger uses. I would just highlight here that the planning board also recommended that meeting for the smallest community corrections facilities as well. We'll talk a little bit about that later. We are also proposing to consolidate all uses with more people than are, would be allowed in a typical household, but where care is not required into a new use type called congregate living. So that would include rooming and boarding type uses, dormitories, and other similar uses, single-room occupancy. And those uses would be permitted generally where they are today, in the higher-intensity residential districts like multi-unit, mixed-use, that sort of thing. And then finally, we would allow more unrelated people to live as part of a household in conventional dwelling units, while clarifying that rent-by-the-room configurations, as is currently the case, are only allowed in as a congregate living use in higher-intensity zone districts where those types of uses are currently allowed. This chart shows the current organization of the section of the zoning code. We currently regulate residential uses under two buckets, household living and group living, and another group living is the residential care category. And then there are other uses, some of which actually do require care but are regulated differently. The proposed change would look like this, essentially, household living would be the bucket of typical uses of a dwelling unit. We're proposing to allow up to five unrelated adults to live as a single nonprofit housekeeping unit in any residential dwelling unit, whether it's a house or an apartment. And then congregate living, again, would be those uses that are not a typical household, more people than would be typically permitted in a household, or people sharing common areas. Again, these would be allowed in higher-intensities zone districts where these types of uses are currently allowed. And then finally, residential care, that would be any facility that where care of some sort, whether it's emergency shelter or assistance with day-to-day activities, is required as a condition of living at that location. That would basically identify that use as a residential care use, rather than trying to list out a bunch of specific defined uses that often become outdated over time. This slide shows what would specifically change if these amendments are adopted, as currently proposed for typical dwelling unit uses. The current regulations are on the left there, so currently in a single-unit use up to two partners or two unrelated adults may live together with unlimited family members. And then in a multi-unit use, so that's everything else duplexes enough, up to four unrelated adults can live together with unlimited family members of any age. We're proposing, as I mentioned, to treat all dwelling units the same, allow up to five adults of any relationship with unlimited relatives in any dwelling unit. With, and then we are also proposing to allow more unrelated adults in those larger dwelling units, larger houses, to a maximum of ten. And then we're proposing a new off-street parking requirement, so currently, single-unit uses, typical detached houses do not have a minimum off-street parking requirement. We are proposing to add a new off-street parking requirement for those households that have six or more adults. And then finally, we're proposing to update the definition to be very clear about what we mean when we talk about nonprofit households, housekeeping units. So this slide shows the current and proposed residential care regulations. The current regulations are shown there on the left, again, small and large residential care, and then shelters and community corrections, all under the residential care bucket, but have additional use limitations and buffer requirements. These proposed changes would establish four new size categories for residential care, again, with spacing and density requirements for those larger facilities, community information meeting requirements for larger facilities, those serving eleven or more guests, or as well as, per the planning board's recommendation, community corrections facilities of any size. This slide summarizes the process for these amendments. So we've, the group living advisory committee met about thirty-six times in various forms to define the problem early on and then work on and refine possible solutions. We've also done forty-six meetings to RNOs or INC or other community groups and trade organizations. We held a public open house back in August of twenty eighteen to review the problem statements and seek public input on those. And then I provided a briefing to the city council of the the proposals that we rolled out early this year, back in January. And then in February and March, we held four open houses around the city to walk through the proposed changes and take feedback. And then we did have a planning board hearing on August nineteenth, at which the planning board unanimously recommended approval of these amendments with a couple of additions, including a, they requested that CPD actually do an annual reporting post-adoption to ensure that we're achieving the goals that we set out to achieve at the beginning of the project, and also that we're not, that these amendments don't have unintended consequences. And so we are working on a set of metrics from which we would take a baseline measurement and then track annually moving forward. And I'm glad to discuss that further as we continue our conversation here. And then the planning board also recommended a revision to the proposed text amendment to require the community information prior to application for a community corrections facility in a residential care type-one use in the low-intensity residential district, so single-unit, two-unit, and rowhouse. I talked a little bit on the process slide about where we've been. Just a little bit more about the group living advisory committee itself, this was really sought to pull together a wide set of viewpoints from all walks of life, people with lived or occupational experience with the code, so we could really understand, especially from the perspective of providers who use the code to make decisions about where to locate facilities. So we could understand some of the challenges that they face, and so that other members of the committee could hear those perspectives, and we could try to find solutions that were satisfactory to all stakeholders. We've also done many instances of outreach, our CPD quarterly newsletters, as well as about fourteen group living project-specific newsletters that went to registered neighborhood organizations, and hundreds, if not thousands, of people who have also signed up on the project website for updates as well. This slide shows where we've done some of the neighborhood outreach that I mentioned. The light blue are the RNO meetings that we have presented at, and I'll just note here that many of those have been, have occurred since we actually began the quarantine period, and so we've done quite a few of these via Zoom, and it actually has proven to be a fairly effective tool to reach out to RNOs, and they've had, the feedback we've received is that they've had good attendance at a lot of those meetings, and we've had some good discussions. The red dots show where the public open houses we held were located, and then we have some upcoming presentations as well shown with the darker blue. So we received more than two thousand written comments on this project since since February, when we first went out to the public during open houses with these proposals. And then since we published the planning board draft in mid-July, at this point, probably about fifteen hundred additional written comments that we've received. Opinions are divided. The majority of people who signed up and came to to comment and provide testimony at the planning board hearing were in support of these proposed changes. But the majority of written input that we've received, which include some citizen-led petitions that have been provided, has been in opposition to these changes. More than twenty RNOs have voted to formally oppose the changes, and there are a few of them are listed here. When we come back with a and request action, we'll have a full accounting of all the comments and input that has come in for city council, but you can go to our website and take a look at the comments that have been received so far as well, if you're interested. We've also gotten a lot of support from some RNOs, as well as many different community groups advocating for affordable and flexible housing. The support that we've received has highlighted many issues, including moving away from exclusionary zoning practices of the past, more equitable distribution of residential care uses throughout the city, which is one of the key early goals of this project, and ensuring that people, especially in residential care uses, have access to services and transit, and the communities that they will eventually be transitioning back into. We heard support for, generally for affordability and for innovation, allowing people to experiment with different types of housing models, as opposed to being sort of narrowly shoehorned into a handful of specific use types. And then we heard a lot of people who were surprised that the sitting county of Denver actually, you know, regulates who is allowed to live together as a household. The next few slides will go through some of the concerns that we've heard, and I'll talk a little bit about what we're proposing to address those. We heard a lot of concerns about household size, both in the early version of these proposals and with some of the, and from some of the feedback we've received for planning board and LUTI as well. Concerns about parking, especially the availability of on-street parking, maintenance of housing, and a perception that rental housing isn't as well-maintained. Commercialization of neighborhoods with rent-by-the-room type uses, and fears that that might impact property values, and generally enforcement. I would just note that we did make changes to the original proposal, and I have a slide that'll provide some details from that here in a couple of slides down. We did make changes in response, including the new off-street vehicle parking requirement for those larger households. And we've strengthened the definition language to really clarify what we mean when we say nonprofit housekeeping unit is a a group of people who have chosen to jointly occupy a household and are not managed and sent in and out by a third-party manager. And I would just also highlight here that our existing regulations, both in the zoning code and in the revised municipal code regarding parking on lawns and or paving front setbacks for parking, parking work trucks in the public right-of-way, and those types of things would not change at all as a part of this, and would continue to be enforced. We've also heard concerns about community corrections uses, specifically in neighborhoods, regarding safety and property values. Generally speaking, you know, we are making this proposal consistent with our broader approach here of not excluding certain populations and instead regulating all residential care uses the same. We also, we know that the models for community corrections especially are evolving, and we want to make sure that the zoning code doesn't stand in the way of of perhaps more therapeutic approaches for community corrections for people reentering society after a period of incarceration. And then we also are seeking to be clear with language in the code that any any provider, residential care provider, serving non-paroled individuals must have an agreement of some sort with the Denver Department of Safety to ensure that we're able to enforce the revised municipal code and the Colorado standards and statutes for community corrections uses. We've heard concerns about the concentration of facilities and neighborhoods, and I'll just highlight here that while the smallest facilities currently and in the future, if these amendments are adopted, do not require spacing, but those serving eleven or more guests do with the goal of ensuring that we don't concentrate larger residential care uses in neighborhoods. We've heard concern about safety of larger residential care uses in neighborhoods. We just highlight here that there are other, outside of the zoning code, which regulates land use, has been not necessarily the operation of facilities. Uses like community corrections do have highly regulated sets of standards and statutes, both within the city's municipal code and within state code for how they operate, the provision of twenty-four-hour security, that sort of thing. And then finally, we've also heard concerns about property value impacts, and this is very challenging to measure meaningfully, especially to predict impacts, but we have certainly looked at the body of academic research that exists out there, which has shown over the years that residential care type uses don't have significant impact on property values, especially when compared to other nearby factors like proximity to a busy road or a shopping center. We have heard a lot of stakeholders question the makeup of our volunteer advisory committee, which did have provider representatives from community corrections and shelters and sober living, and I would also highlight we had members of the committee, or we met with people who were on the other side of that equation, people who have lived in various types of facilities as well. Again, our objective there was to get a broad range of perspectives, and I would also highlight that the advisory committee had many RNO and neighborhood representatives. We had participation from city council and from planning board members, and our multiple public events, trying to bring in that broader perspective, and certainly I invite anybody to go take a look at our project website, you can actually read records and summaries of all the meetings that the advisory committee had, as well as see some of the presentations we gave. And then finally, we've heard concerns about the inclusion of all residential use types in the project scope here, and recommend, or suggestions or requests to divide them. And, you know, generally speaking, what I would say here is that these uses are all highly interrelated, the demand for one impacts the availability of another, and we don't see that it would be practical to divide these up and consider them separately when they are all so highly related to each other, and instead are recommending that we take what we're proposing here, which is a holistic approach to addressing regulations for housing of all types. This slide shows the changes that we have made in response to the community input, that these were changes that were made with the group living advisory committee's input in May after our open houses. They include reducing the base number of unrelated adults that would be permitted in a household from the original proposal of eight to five in any dwelling unit, but still allowing that provision for additional adults for larger households, while establishing a maximum cap of ten. There had not previously been a maximum cap for the largest houses. We are also proposing, as I mentioned, the off-street parking requirement in response to concerns that we've heard about the availability of on-street parking. So that basically means that any household with six or more adults has to have at least one or two parking, off-street parking spaces on the zone lot somewhere on the property. And then finally, we've heard concerns about the, some of the larger-size residential care uses in the lowest-intensity zone districts, again, single-unit, two-unit, rowhouse. And we are proposing, as a way to address that, a minimum twelve thousand square foot lot size for the type-two residential care uses in SUTU and RH, which would ensure that those uses are on properties that can either provide the needed buffering from neighboring uses, or on properties that have previously been in use for some kind of civic or public use. These are the review criteria that the city council uses to consider adoption of a text amendment. I'm not going to go into the details of how this is consistent with those just yet, because we're just doing a briefing today, and so when we come back for final action, I'll come back with some analysis of how this, these proposals address the criteria. So at this point, I'm happy to open it up for any questions, and I have additional slides that we can take a look at, too, if we need to dig into some of the details.
Hey, great. Thank you, Andrew. I appreciate that. I would welcome Councilwoman Keneesh to the group. All right, we got a few hands up, and colleague, I absolutely wanted you to ask your questions, I just want to ask if you can just not take too much time, since I think we're gonna get through a lot of members who want to speak and ask questions. But up first, we got Councilwoman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna talk really fast, but I'm not gonna be brief, I'm sorry. I just, first of all, want to thank everyone for working on this. I acknowledge the problems that the advisory committee was trying to solve, and I am a hundred percent behind wanting to solve them. This is a significant piece of legislation. I have a lot of questions, and as I ask them, I hope I will be treated with respect. But I'd like to start with a few comments before my questions. I have concerns about the rollout of the proposal, community engagement, and when and how the proposal was communicated. Obviously, COVID has impacted how communities meet. Some in my district have not met at all in twenty twenty, because their members don't want to meet virtually. I firmly believe that most residents are completely unaware of the proposal, even though it will impact their community. Community members, other council members, and I have asked CPD on multiple occasions to delay the process so there can be more outreach, and every time CPD denied our quest. So now I'd like us to slow down and take the time that we need. I have personally held dozens of in-person meetings in parks all summer long, reaching hundreds of residents to explain the problems, the history, and the proposed solutions. District Four has historically been home to many group homes, so we're very familiar with that model. But this proposal is so much bigger than that, and it's very difficult to get a handle on it. I've been working hard to inform my constituents and to get them on board for solutions, not to just be opposed. I wish that more residents would have been part of the group living advisory committee from the beginning. I think we would have had a very different proposal before us, one that more people would support. Before I ask my question, I'd like to read some language from the Denver City Council's recently adopted racial equity lens, and ask everyone to think about if we're honoring our commitment as we consider this proposal. Number one, are all historically disadvantaged groups who are affected by the decision we are making currently represented in this process, including those who have been historically oppressed because of their race, gender, sexual orientation, class, disability, immigration, status, and age? Have we heard the voices of those who are affected? Number two, how will the proposed decision affect each group? Number three, how will the proposed decision be perceived by each group? Number four, does the decision advance racial equity or mitigate unintended consequences? I'd like everyone to think about that. I know we all agree that engaging with and listening to Denver's residents is essential. Council members have voted down proposals that have lacked adequate community engagement. Councilwoman Caniche just last week said that we need to listen harder to voices that have been excluded. So I think we need to talk about who wasn't on the group living advisory council and whose voices we did not hear. A Montbello resident spoke at the planning board hearing, reminded us that her voice has not been heard. There was no representation from Montbello on the group living advisory council. There are two hundred and twenty-six registered neighborhood organizations in Denver and many more organizations that aren't RNOs, yet only eight neighborhood representatives were on the committee. There were no representatives from six council districts, including Councilwoman Sandoval, Torres, Sawyer, Cashman, Herndon and Gilmore. No one from their districts were on the group living advisory meeting. While three white men representing neighborhoods were on the committee from Councilwoman Saytabaka's district and two neighborhood representatives from Councilman Hines, a white man and a white woman. I don't think that is equitable. We need to hear the voices from our neighborhoods. One speaker at planning board, Ms. Schmidt, suggested that we bring all neighborhoods together to work on solving this problem together. And she asked us to imagine a proposal that everyone agreed on, rather than this one that might tear our city apart. So I'm not suggesting we start over, but my goal is to find a solution that communities can get behind. So finally, I'm getting to my question. Andrew, it's about household size. One of the reasons I'm comfortable with increasing the household size from two is that the majority of other cities allow three to five unrelated people in a house, but I haven't seen any that allow ten. So can you tell us about the discussion the committee had and the reasons why the cap was pushed to ten for houses up to twenty-six hundred square feet?
Sure. Yeah, thank you. So you are correct that that other cities we looked at allow a range of of unrelated adults and and typically unlimited family members. What would be unique about this proposal is that it would allow additional unrelated adults in larger houses and that came up as a recommendation from from advisory committee members as a way to essentially look at our existing housing stock and and think about it in the context of our overarching goals of ensuring people are able to stay housed and 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 remain in housing. And we had people ask, you know, if we have larger houses, why would we not use, allow more people to live in them, especially if we already allow unlimited family members to live in a house? So that is the that is the where that proposal came from. It would be unique when compared to other cities to allow additional unrelated adults in houses by by square foot.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Black. Councilman Cashman, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Andrew, I've got to admit, I'm I'm sitting here kind of stunned. I have paid attention to this as it has been rolled out over the months and I believe I still do not clearly understand the the allowable numbers in a household. I had thought it had changed where relateds and unrelateds are all considered the same. And it's five people and sixteen hundred square feet and one adult in addition for every two hundred additional square feet, which is correct.
So the the proposal, as it currently stands, as 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 recommended by planning board, is up to five unrelated adults plus relative, plus unlimited relatives in any house. And then for houses larger than sixteen hundred square feet, one additional unrelated adult per two hundred square feet of finished floor area. And an earlier version of the proposal would have regulated just by adult regardless of relationship. And in response to feedback that that, you know, people were concerned about, you know, the sort of worst case scenarios of very large households, we we pulled that number back to a lower number of unrelated adults. But at that point, we had to preserve the allowance for relatives because we didn't want to make some of our existing multi or multi-generational family households non-conforming. So the current proposal would regulate unrelated adults, again, five up to sixteen hundred square feet and then over that, one additional unrelated adult per two hundred square feet of finished floor area.
Right. Okay. So if I'm doing my math correct for unrelated, we get seventeen people in a four thousand square foot home. Am I correct?
No, there 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 would be a cap on the total number of unrelated adults of ten in any house.
Okay, but that's ten and all their adult relatives.
As is currently the case, unlimited adult relatives would be permitted.
So that's ten in a twenty-six hundred square foot home or larger?
Yes, that's correct.
So the question is, so we've got ten, ten unrelated adults in a twenty-six hundred square foot home. Do their additional relatives require two hundred square feet per person?
They do not.
Okay, so what what I what I'm getting to, Andrew, is I'm kind of lost as to why you're saying ten people in a twenty-six hundred square foot home, when and when there's really no cap on it?
And I I I'm sorry if I've been unclear, but it would be ten unrelated.
It may be my ability to understand, but I'm trying to get clear.
Understood.
So there's that whole bit of really, there's no limit. And I understand that above five people, we need integrated smoke detectors and above ten people, we need sprinkler systems. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's still correct according to the building code. Okay. Two things that that one other question I have for you and which we we exchanged briefly, and I'm just trying to call this up. So from one of our neighboring communities, as we've talked, Andrew, I have the University of Denver in my district, that community has struggled for decades to keep student housing under control in the neighborhoods. And what Colorado Springs tells us, and and this is a quote, we found that the problems associated with unrelated, quote, families is generally limited to the rental housing market, especially with student housing. Students tend to cram as many in as they can and aren't always the best or most considerate neighbors. So with that in mind, what 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 I'm prepared to hear is that, you know, recognizing that may be a problem, we'll need to deal, you know, have inspectors go out and check to be sure we're observing our ordinance, whatever that turns out to be. And and I would just offer there that we're not equipped for that. So I I'm wondering if there is a budget ask prepared for how many additional staff you believe would be needed to to enforce whatever ordinance comes out of all of this. I I think myself that one size fits all does not work.
So not a not a budget ask tied to this particular project, but I would say that I will say that our Z N I S staff is is, you know, dedicated to addressing these enforcement enforcement issues and and we are always endeavoring to make sure that we have the the staff necessary to handle the the demand.
And and I would not denigrate anyone on our staff. They're they're working their tails off, doing the best job they possibly can, whether it's making sure that there are people, keep their weeds low and their dogs don't bark too much and and that there's not too many people living in a household. But we know we're in an extreme budgetary crunch right now and I can't imagine having the staff to enforce this. Thank you. I know there's lots of other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mind if I add one more, one more comment to that?
Not at all.
So, you know, right now, our our Z N I S staff do handle about a hundred and ninety-five or so calls annually, three-one-one calls per year for unrelated adults. And about half those actually turn out to be real violations. And so we also know that there are a lot of households that exist of people living together, either unaware of the regular, the current regulations or because people live like that all over the world or or knowingly living in violation of the regulations. It's our hope that by by acknowledging some of those fairly common types of households and allowing larger numbers of unrelated people to live together, that our Z N I S staff will be able to focus their time on those specific cases that are really egregious problems in the neighborhood. So so essentially by reducing the the demand for calls, we we will free up existing employee time so that those inspectors can be focused on the real issues.
Well, with with the size of the houses in the neighborhoods surrounding the University of Denver, I would expect if this goes through as written, we'll have de facto fraternity and sorority houses frequently through the neighborhood and in historically, they have proven to be problems for the community. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Cashman. And I and colleagues, I forgot to mention this, even though you can feel free to direct your questions to Andrew, we've also got Kyle Dalton, who's in as long as as well as Nate Lucero, if you had questions for them as well. Councilwoman Sawyer, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so anyone can take this question, I guess. I'm always saying, you know, we can't talk about these things in silos. So there's another project that's coming through, right? The residential infill project will be starting two thousand and twenty-one. One of the things that it does is talk about the potential for taking what is now a single-family home and potentially adding an ADU on the back or two, you know, an ADU that is attached in an ADU on the back of the lot to potentially add housing stock to provide wealth building strategies for homeowners. There are a lot of really great things about this. It's an equity strategy. It's listed in Comp two thousand and forty. It's something that a lot of us are really, really supportive of. And it is a very useful strategy that a lot of different cities use. It's a it's a smart strategy. So but if we are looking at, for example, the number, if we're looking at that in relation to group living, if we're looking at our numbers now, okay, so where where there is one single-family home that is, even if it's two thousand square feet, then does that mean that if we were to hypothetically speaking in the residential infill project, create a space where that would then be potentially split into one upstairs, one thousand square foot home, one downstairs, one thousand square foot ADU and one one thousand square foot ADU added on in the backyard, that's then three one thousand square foot parcels on where on that land where there's now one. Does that mean that then there would be thirty unrelated adults in the group living proposal allowed to live on that land, plus all of their relatives? Where right now there are two?
So so currently in ADUs have a separate regulation in the zoning code of one person, one resident per two hundred square feet of finished floor area. And that wouldn't change. So while this, while that, you know, separate set of of text amendments might look at allowing additional accessory dwelling units on the property, only the primary dwelling unit could have the 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 this would would have his household defined by the household definition in the zoning code. And so if if the if the main house on the site was sixteen hundred square feet, then only five unrelated adults could be part of the mix in that household.
Well, that wasn't my, that wasn't my hypothetical. My hypothetical was two thousand square feet, right? So if that was a, so if it was a thousand square feet upstairs, that was then the main household, there would be five unrelated adults allowed in that original space.
That's correct.
And then if the downstairs got turned into a separate accessory dwelling unit, that would be five allowed there, right? One for every two hundred square feet.
One for two hundred square feet.
Five allowed in a thousand square foot ADU in the back. So that would be fifteen adults allowed on that space where there are now two. Is that correct? So so is that is that I'm I'm just trying to make sure that my math would then be correct. If if we're looking at the the consequences of this, right? Not in a not in a bubble. So so that's, so now there are two unrelated adults allowed to live on that property and and once potentially this residential infill project comes through, there would be fifteen allowed to live on that property?
I I I would like to to get back to you with a bit more nuance on this because I want to review the ADU requirements, but I don't believe that, for instance, a detached ADU would be limited in size based on the size of the parcel and and might be closer to six, like six hundred and fifty square feet max size, which would, well, that which would permit fewer unrelated adults or adults in general.
But in, I mean, I, what we're looking at now, a lot of our ADUs, we're looking at our thousand square feet. So it's not, it's not an unrealistic hypothetical for us to be looking at at two hundred square feet a person, which is what you said. That's five people, right? Under this, under this rule?
Yes, can what you what you
That's right. So, okay, so let's just put a pin in that for a minute. Um, so then in terms of, I've also heard you and I have talked a little bit about, my residents have been a little bit concerned about this. The, is it true that this group living zoning change, if it were to come through, would not apply to all, anything that is under old chapter fifty-nine zoning code?
That that is correct. The the these amendments would be to the Denver zoning code. And and currently, it is the municipal code prohibits amendment to a former chapter fifty-nine, which covers about twenty percent of the city still. It is, it's a priority of CPD to rezone those properties as it has been from since two thousand and ten, and we have methodically done that. And we're looking at ways to ensure that these these proposed changes would would impact household uses in former chapter fifty-nine. But but what we're talking about here is an amendment to the Denver zoning code.
Councilwoman Sawyer, I just want to, I just want to chime in. Nate Lucero raised his hand. And so I think he may have a response.
He may have a response to that. Yeah, because I'm, I I guess I'm a little confused, Nate. If you've got an answer for that, because I I guess it's like twenty percent of the city, right? That's still under old chapter fifty-nine. So is it true that this is not gonna apply to that? If you've got a, if you've got a response, that'd be great.
Yeah, thanks, Councilwoman. Sorry. This is Nate Lucero, Assistant City Attorney. So Andrew is correct. The the amendment is only to the Denver zoning code. So whatever properties are still zoned under former chapter fifty-nine, these, these will not be applicable to those properties. That being said, one thing that I want folks to keep in mind is that when it comes to related adults, we're not really changing the rule on that. That's the way former chapter fifty-nine and the Denver zoning code read today. So it's pretty much an unlimited number of related adults that can live together in a household. Is that correct, Andrew?
That is correct. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That that's what I had. I'm not sure if there are any questions for me. I'm happy to answer them if there are.
Great. Thanks. So the current law, right? So like my husband and I are not related under the current law. That's, is that correct?
That is correct. The current law allows a husband and or a partners, two partners or two unrelated adults, plus any relatives to each from a specific list that does not include spouses.
Right. Okay. And and sorry, I will finish up. One final question. As it relates to HOAs then, are, is it not going to be applied to HOAs or can HOAs enact stricter rules in which case it would not then be applicable if they were to enact stricter, if an HOA were to enact stricter rules?
These regulations would would impact the zoning code, so underlying zoning of all properties under the zoning code. As is currently the case, HOAs that enforce their own covenants or landlords that enforce their own regulations for occupancy of their units, as long as they're, if they're more restricted. uh, as long as they're, if they're more restrictive, uh, then that is permitted. Uh, what, what an H O A or landlord can't do is allow, is have its own regulations that it enforces that are less restrictive than the zoning code.
Okay, so if twenty percent of the city is exempted and H O As could potentially enact more strict codes and they're exempted, how much of the city is, is, um, covered by H O As? Do we know that?
I, I do not have a figure for that.
Okay, but how is this, um, equitable? If we are exempting potentially H O As and we are exempting Chapter Fifty-Nine, twenty percent of the city, um, how is this law then being, um, advancing equity across the city?
So, a few ways to, to, to respond to that. The first is that, you know, the former Chapter Fifty-Nine is, is, is an important issue to us as well. And, and as we continue to implement our codes by amending the zoning code, some of the inequities between the two codes will, uh, come more into focus. And so we, we hear that concern and we are definitely looking at ways that we can address that specific issue. Uh, with regard to H O As, you know, there's, that, that is true of any city, uh, that, you know, some, some subdivisions especially that, uh, were all developed at once and are, are under, uh, some sort of, uh, uh, property taxation for infrastructure, that sort of thing, set and enforce their own regulations. Uh, our take on that is that, uh, that would not be a justification for basically making the rules, um, uh, uh, keeping these outdated and antiquated rules for the entire city just because some landlords or some, uh, H O As, uh, may enforce some regulations that are different. And I would also note that H O As and landlords are still bound by the Federal Fair Housing Act to ensure that, uh, residential care uses are not, they can't preclude residential care uses from neighborhoods. They can't preclude children from neighborhoods. And, and generally speaking, most of the city is, uh, the, the core of the city, neighborhoods do not have H O As and are under the, the Denver zoning code zoning.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sawyer. Uh, next, Council President Gilmore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Andrew, could you, um, pull up the map that you had sent over to my council office yesterday? The single-family parcels, um, citywide showing the, the former Chapter Fifty-Nine zone districts and then the, um, parcels in the Denver zoning code, please?
I'm gonna go ahead and pull my PowerPoint back up here.
Yep, whichever one you want to work with. Um, so, we have, we have had this issue, um, in the past with C P D. And, and first I want to recognize all the work that's been done by C P D staff and community members. But to circle back, um, there was no representation from District Eleven. And when you look at District Eleven in the far, um, top right-hand corner, when you run the statistics, seventy-five percent of the council district that I represent in District Eleven, seventy-five percent of that community is under old code. And I'm very concerned that in the rush for C P D and others to try to quickly, and two and a half years is, is quick, if you're trying to undo historic systemic racism in housing, there have been some, quite honestly, missteps in true authentic engagement of Black and Brown communities, and this is indicative of it. Um, if somebody two and a half years ago, Andrew would have come to District Eleven and said, hey, we're wanting to, um, update the zoning code and bring everybody into the new zoning code because we are looking at different tools to have in our toolbox to open up more opportunities for housing. That's a very different conversation than where we're at right now. And now, quite frankly, I'm concerned that we have almost tainted now a citywide conversation around bringing the seventy-five percent of single-unit parcels in my council district into the new code. And so my question for you, Andrew, and, and we can go ahead and, and pull that down, but, but I think it's, it's blaring, um, for, for me as a representative that in my council district where there are, you know, seventy-five percent of the homes won't need to comply with this. And then on top of that, we have H O As and metro districts that there's covenants on the land. And so I, I, I would love to understand, two and a half years ago, Andrew, how, and for me and my residents, it feels very systematic that we did not have Black representation, we did not have a District Eleven representative. Um, we did not, we took you up on every offer that you offered to come and brief us. But as you might imagine, um, it, it's a difficult conversation. And when, when we have Cash, Councilman Cashman asking for clarification, I can only imagine how difficult it is when somebody is working full-time, raising children, et cetera, et cetera. And so if you could walk me back to two and a half years ago, what the thought process was and how, um, I guess, you know, power and privilege shows its, um, it shows itself in very different ways. And so what were those conversations two and a half years ago? And even, why was this not self-corrected six months into the process? So we could actually be having a citywide inclusive conversation about this, Andrew?
So, lots, lots of questions to, to unpack there. First, when we, when we began the project, we actually reached out to all council districts and asked if council members had people that they would recommend from their neighborhoods. We also asked this question of, of I N C, um, uh, if, if they could recommend people with interest and expertise in this field. Uh, we heard from some council offices, but we did not hear from all. And we then reached out to the people who had been recommended to us and gave them a, an overview of kind of the expectations for the, the time commitment for the project, how many meetings they would need to attend, that sort of thing. And, and once people were aware of that commitment, that narrowed down the field a little bit more. So that's how we ended up with the, the, uh, the, the group that was, uh, ultimately on the committee. You know, certainly I don't want to downplay the importance of this former Chapter Fifty-Nine issue. Um, as, as you know, this has long been a, a challenge. We do, not only do we incentivize, uh, uh, property owners to come in and rezone their properties that are under former Chapter Fifty-Nine, city council members also can, uh, propose to rezone those properties as well, to bring them into the, the Denver zoning code. And, uh, you know, this project especially has highlighted, um, some of those, uh, some of the inequities there. And we are, uh, definitely committed to taking a look at that. I guess, um, you know, stepping back a little bit, um, we think we have to, to, we have to start somewhere to address these problems with the zoning code. A lot of the, the language that defines households in the current zoning code and the Denver zoning code is the same language that, that was pulled forward from former Chapter Fifty-Nine, and it actually dates back as far as the nineteen forties. And so we, because the, you know, the, the, uh, the Denver zoning code can be amended, uh, and because our, uh, plans ask us to call for us to implement by making those amendments, uh, our, our take is that while, you know, certainly, uh, we think that we need to address this issue citywide, uh, that a, a starting point is those properties under the Denver zoning code. Uh, but we will definitely look at, uh, what it would take to, you know, uh, to be able to either amend former Chapter Fifty-Nine or apply, uh, uh, new definitions into former Chapter Fifty-Nine. It's not something, uh, it's certainly not something that we take lightly and, and we hear where you're coming from. We have, um, done a lot of outreach, uh, recently to Montbello to try to better understand some of the concerns that they've expressed, especially as it relates to parking. Uh, a lot of our proposals for, uh, adding, uh, off-street parking requirements actually were, uh, were, were started because of those conversations that we've had, uh, with residents in Montbello, hearing that concern about on-street parking.
So I want to dig a little bit deeper, Andrew. I, in my question, had asked what C P D staff did. And, you know, you laid out that you reached out to the community or you reached out to the council offices. Well, um, but, you know, okay, go ahead, push that blame out there to the community, to the council offices. But I want to get back to you and C P D and what C P D staff did internally to prepare yourselves to actually embark upon a citywide conversation that was inclusive of all neighborhoods and how you quite honestly prepared, educated, and had checkpoints along this process for your staff members saying, wait a minute, we're looking at this and this isn't going to be inclusive because we are pitting neighborhoods against neighborhoods. I mean, that map right there shows, Montbello is gonna be the brunt of this and G V R is protected from it. That is the narrative. That is the message. It's playing on the map. So again, what, how did C P D staff and your leadership prepare for this work so that it wasn't muddying the waters, but it was truly coming from a place of anti-racism, anti-oppression, and that it was comprehensive for every single neighborhood of the city? And we actually had representation, not the council office was asked, we went to R and Os. How did you self-correct within your own ranks?
Yeah. So, you know, certainly the, the advisory committee itself was, was very diverse. People with, uh, from all, uh, racial backgrounds, um, uh,
Was there an African-American or Black person?
There was. Uh, and we saw, uh,
Can we get that, the, because everything that I've seen, I, I have not seen that. And I've never met the person and I don't believe anybody in my community knows that person.
Okay. And, and I'll certainly, and I, I, I'd like to respond at, at some point, at more length to, to some of these questions. But not only did we seek to have a, a, a very diverse committee of, of people with all types of lived experiences, um, where we were not able to find coverage on that committee, um, we, we actually did focus groups with different, uh, with different stakeholder groups. Uh, we went to different R and Os. We came to community meetings like your District Eleven Town Hall last year. Um, uh, we, we made many efforts to where we felt like we were not getting, uh, uh, the, the, the broadest representation of viewpoints, uh, within the committee. We, uh, we sought the, um, input of people through focus groups, through working with different community organizations, through going to the, the Neighborhood Anti-Displacement Network, uh, uh, organization through Nest and, and many others. We have certainly, uh, been aware of the need to make sure that we had, uh, uh, a broad representation and where we, where we, where we, where we felt like we were missing some of that reputation, we act, or, uh, 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 input, we actively sought it by going to, uh, to community groups.
And so my, my final question, and thank you, um, Mr. Chair for, for allowing me, um, to ask my final question. So we just finished up about a year ago, Andrew, the Far Northeast Neighborhood Plan. It was over twenty-four months. Um, it was in partnership with Councilman Herndon and my council office. Um, Cortland Heiser and Eugene Howard were the planners, along with, um, others. And we had monthly meetings to talk about the Far Northeast Neighborhood Plan. What community wanted, what we wanted to see. We talked a lot about fast food and we talked a lot about drive-throughs, but we never had any presentation nor mention during the Far Northeast Neighborhood Planning Process that was twenty-four months of group living amendments being looked at or worked on. Now, if you look at the timing, it was, it, it overlapped in some ways. And C P D staff never mentioned anything about this to the community because I guarantee you, the old code would have come front and center in that conversation because if you would have presented the same maps and those maps have not changed, that would have drastically shifted the conversation into one of inclusivity and how do we even embark upon group living amendments that would not be citywide, that would only be under the, the new code. And so, um, I, I guess, what, what was the misstep or the miscommunication to not come and present to, one, the Community Steering Committee, which was made up about, about twenty community members, and then also at our numerous town halls and community engagement. We, we never had a presentation or any mention of group living.
So, uh, I, I'm, I'm sorry that we didn't, uh, present at one of those meetings. And I'll have to go back and look at the two different project timelines to better understand. I can say that we have gone to the steering committees and public meetings of other, uh, uh, N P I plans that, that began later. Um, and, and, you know, thinking back, uh, a year and a half, two years ago, I, I believe the, the Far Northeast Plan, and again, I'll, I will have to go look at these schedules, but I believe the Far Northeast Plan may not have been in as active of a meeting stage anymore as we were getting started and, and starting to do, uh, neighborhood outreach. Um, we have gone, for instance, to the East and East Central Plan Meetings. We've gone to the, the West Area Plan Meetings. Uh, but I, I certainly hear you on that concern about Far Northeast and, um, we'll take a look at the, at the two project schedules to try to better understand that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, colleagues, just as a time check, we're at twenty minutes till noon. Um, and I would certainly like to ensure I get you all off for lunch. Councilman Flynn, you're up.
Thank you. Um, I think this discussion shows us that this is pretty much a seriously flawed process, lacking in equitable engagement, um, perhaps fatally flawed. As Councilwoman Black said at the beginning, uh, seven of us, Andrew, as you know, seven of us twice requested when COVID hit that this be slowed down because the public engagement had to be cut off precipitously. Uh, instead, you forged ahead without regard to the fact that from that point on, uh, the public could only react to what was drawn up rather than having authentic input into what would be drawn up. That's what authentic engagement is. I think it's, it's evident from this discussion that this has to be broken up, uh, into separate, uh, actions. Uh, this conversation alone shows that the package is way, way too comprehensive to be digested in a single bite. Uh, we're discussing global issues here when we need to actually get into the details of each of those three areas that on your slide show a logical way to break them up into household, uh, household definition, congregant care and group homes. Obviously, there's interrelationships, but, uh, but they're easily broken up and digested and talked about individually as I N C has recommended and as other, uh, as other, uh, organizations have recommended. Uh, this should have been slowed down. Uh, providers of group home services and other types uh, of services in residential neighborhoods really drove this process. The imbalance was, was, uh, it's way too obvious to, to, to ignore. Uh, I appointed the only person of color representing neighborhoods to the process and he stopped going, uh, after, I think, three or four meetings because he came to the conclusion that there was a predetermined outcome here. Uh, the process was dominated by self-interested providers of commercial services in residential neighborhoods. No balance. Uh, most of your neighborhood presentations occurred after, uh, the process and the recommendations were being drawn up. Uh, so the opportunity, that public input funnel that we always talk about, where you have the most input at the beginning and as the funnel narrows, your, your ability to influence the outcome is diminished. And that, only then was when the public was engaged. As far as, uh, equitable distribution of residential care around the city, according to the data you've provided us, I have twelve of the hundred and twenty-nine in my district, including three community corrections facilities. Uh, in fact, in my district has more community corrections beds, thirty-five percent of the total, and currently forty-one percent of all the current residents, which is more than any council district, uh, already, uh, plus, uh, group homes of several different categories. Uh, you mentioned two thousand public comments or more than two thousand. It appears to me there are actually more than five thousand and that about ninety percent of the public comment has been in opposition. So we have a serious problem here that we have to, that we have to realize, and it's not enough to say, we know what's best. This is what we want and the ninety percent of you just don't understand. Uh, we clearly haven't engaged and we haven't engaged communities of color, uh, and we haven't engaged authentically our neighborhoods. Frankly, uh, looking at this, I believe that this will be a, an accelerator, a devastating. a devastating accelerator to displacement in our vulnerable neighborhoods. Uh, because you will see commercialization in areas where money seeks its own level. Uh, and, uh, as Councilwoman Sawyer said, our chapter 59 areas, HOAs can opt out. Uh, I'm concerned about the impact that this will have on displacement in our vulnerable areas of, um, in my district, Marley, Brentwood, Harvey Park, Bear Valley. Through increasing prices, through rents rising and not falling because of, uh, uh, because of the allowance of people to double, triple and quintuple up. That's going to drive up rents for, for a family, a mom and a dad and couple of kids. If I'm a landlord, why would I rent to, uh, to a young couple for 1,600 bucks, 1,800 bucks for a bungalow in, in Brentwood, uh, when I can rent to five, five white guys looking to bump, uh, buddy up and charge them each 800 and get four grand out of it? This is going to increase rents. A couple of questions, Andrew. On slide two, you showed us the problems that you were, that we were attempting to solve. I'm interested in having a discussion on what are the other ways to solve those problems? Rather than this, what other ways were looked at, uh, to solve these problems? Are there other pathways to solve them? Um, I'm a little concerned about the response that you, uh, made to concerns about community corrections in every neighborhood. You were going from a system where we are very intentional and very restrictive in where we place them. And you said they're all in industrial areas. Well, they're not. The three that are in my district are not in industrial, I don't have an industrial area. Uh, the two I, the two I have on Fort Logan and the one on Federal Boulevard are very intentionally placed and they're assets to the community, but it's because we were very intentional about where we placed them. So we're going from a system where we're very restrictive and thoughtful about where can you put these? And too restrictive frankly. And we're flipping it 180 degrees and we're saying, you can go anywhere. You can go anywhere at all. Uh, you can go on the middle of a block in a suburban context. You can go, you can go anywhere. In fact, you can put 40 people, uh, in a, in a single family neighborhood. 40 people on a block that contains single family homes. That, that, that's, that's an absurdity. I'd like to know why are there no distancing requirements among all, uh, residential care uses in order to avoid, uh, concentration of commercial activity in residential neighborhoods? Frankly, all group homes are commercial enterprises. And finally, uh, uh, I think Councilman Cashman brought this up. And NIS does do a great job, uh, but they currently have difficulty enforcing, uh, the, the rules that already exist. We're establishing a more complex set of rules that I think is going to make it, uh, if it's already impossible, it's going to make it improbable to enforce, especially parking. Uh, because then we're going to have to know how many people are in each household. Uh, the sprinkler system requirement, when you have 10 adults residing in a household. How are we going to know that? We're not going to know that. And it's going to be, I think it's going to be impossible to enforce these. Uh, but could you address a couple of questions that I had about, uh, uh, on slide two? Can you help us understand what are the problems? You stated just very generally, here's what the problems are.
Let me pull that slide back up to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
And I'm going to pull it up. I have it up on a PDF here. Slide two. I was particularly, uh, I wrote that question down when I showed, when I, I saw unpredictable permitting and notification requirements. Well, tell us what they are. Outdated or unclear language highlighted for us. What are the regulations that prohibit needed residential care facilities? Or keep people from seeking flexible housing options? Like I said, residential care, I have a dozen of them in my district. And I have the spreadsheet that was sent out earlier that shows, uh, Councilwoman Sandoval has 14. Uh, Councilwoman Black has 10. Uh, her, Councilman Herndon has 20. Uh, Councilwoman Sidabaka has 21. Councilman Hines has 14. So it looks to me like the, they are spread out. Not every council district is the same, but of course council districts change every 10 years as well. So I'm, I'm not sure I understand, uh, what we're, what was, so I need more specificity on that.
Sure. And so let me,
We only have 12 minutes left, uh, but this will be a great follow-up. But I absolutely believe that this council needs to break these up and consider them in digestible bites and have a thorough discussion that brings everybody to the table frankly for the first time. Thank you.
Okay. So Councilman Flynn, you said you can, you can defer those answers through a later time? Is that what, I want to make sure I heard you right.
Certainly, because I, I, I wouldn't want Andrew to be put on the spot and, and try to give, you know, just off the cuff or have to do research and use the last 12 minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, thank you, Councilman Flynn. Um, Councilwoman Black, I see you are back out with a hand, but I wanted to just offer for any of our colleagues who have not had a chance to weigh in. If there's something that you wanted to, I want to afford you that opportunity before we hit the second round. So I would just pause a minute to see if there's, oh, okay. I don't know who got in first. So, oh, Councilwoman Knit, you, you pull back or?
I'm deferring to Councilman Clark.
Okay. Councilman Clark.
I'll go after him if there's time. If there's not, I understand.
All right. Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know there's not a lot of time. I, I think that, you know, um, a lot of people brought up a lot of really important concerns and, and shown a lot of the reasons why we need to really dig into this. I guess I, I just want to throw out there and Andrew, I, again, I don't need a, an answer right now, uh, similar to Councilman Flynn. But it feels like with a lot of these regulations, um, what is possible under some of it is not probable or realistic. And we are presenting to our communities, this picture that you could have five unrelated people plus each of them could have 100 family members and that's 500 people in a house. That's never actually going to happen, right? But because we're presenting that in so many different lanes, it is, it is, it's overwhelming. And it's terrifying for a lot of people to imagine what could be. So I would love, uh, you know, if you could maybe a little bit of a breakdown about why did we? And, and I think you and I talked about this earlier in the process, but the problems with enforcement, enforcement, enforcement always wants it to look this way. We run into this similar thing, you know, with public works conversations all the time. The engineers say, yeah, but this is how things work and this is how things look. But when that meets, when that rubber meets the road, literally in our communities, that's not how it feels. And that's not what, it, it, there's a disconnect there. And I feel like on a lot of fronts, we have a big disconnect between what on paper is possible, but will never happen. Like even if we look at other cities that have some of these regulations, it doesn't happen. It can't happen. It, it's unrealistic. And, and, and I think we need to look at ways that are more of a pain in the butt from an enforcement standpoint, from engineer lens to really put into the code as we take this step on a journey, you know? And I, I like that you started with these steps, um, of how these have changed over the years. I, I think that, I think that I want us to take a step forward. I think that the step that we're projecting is not really the step that we're taking because it will never look like that. And how can we dial some of this back to be more realistic to what is actually going to happen? I think people could digest that a little bit better. And so if there are big reasons other than, you know, again, the the book answer versus the, in the neighborhood answer, um, I, I'd love to hear more on that. And again, it doesn't have to be right now, but I, I think that that's a lot of the disconnect, um, that I'm seeing. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do you mind if I make just a real quick comment to that? So a lot of the, a lot of the questions that have come up and, and the, and the specific problems are detailed in our written staff report. Uh, and I tried to keep the presentation for today fairly short, but, uh, I will, I, I, I've recorded all the questions that have come in here today. And I just wanted to let you know that, uh, I will, uh, try to answer them and respond to them in the, in the staff report that we prepare for, for you when you're ready to, when you are considering final action.
Hey, thank you, Andrew. All right. Uh, Councilwoman Knit, you're up.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I think that in very few conversations are there rights and wrongs. And in this conversation, there are important points and important concerns being raised in, in many of the comments from my colleagues and in many of the responses from the staff. I think that I will remind folks how very new our city is on the journey of the equity lens. Uh, the council draft that was read from earlier has not even been finalized and adopted by our body yet, much less something that the staff has been informed of or bought into. They were being trained on some of this stuff a year into the project. They have their first cycle of having to do these plans coming up. And so I will say that it's not that there are not important questions about who was at the first table that was sat two and a half years ago. There were conversations. Um, one of the things that happens is when you let neighborhoods self-select, our neighborhood organizations citywide are not as representative as our population. So that is an RNO issue that we've talked about before. Councilman Cashman, I know, is looking at questions about this. So I just, I want to acknowledge the seriousness of who's at which table and how important it is. But I also just, I, I, I guess I want to ask us for some grace in how quickly our city has evolved in this and how difficult it is to look back and weigh decisions made several years ago under lenses that we ourselves have not yet adopted. And so it, none of that is to take away from the seriousness though of the representation question. I also just want to say that I have personally talked to a number of people of color throughout this project. There were many, I mean, it sounds like many council members listened to the planning board meeting, but we had representatives of East Colfax refugee families speaking out. Uh, we had folks who, um, you know, in the, in the homeless realm who were at the table, including people of color saying, you know, we do need, you know, this alternative to live together. And I just, I, I, I do want to say that I value those voices that we heard throughout the way. And I'm concerned that if they're hearing this conversation now, they may feel like their voice didn't count because they weren't in a certain neighborhood or because they weren't at a certain table. I mean, the ADPN network, I don't know if anyone's ever attended that meeting, but Irene's meetings include, uh, black and Latinx leaders from across the city. It's a multiracial group. They focus on anti-displacement. I was there at least once when this group was there. I know my staff was there, maybe twice more. I, I just want to say that those folks matter and they were at the table and some of them have written letters. And so I just, I don't want us to devalue the conversations of some folks that we've heard of. Um, I, I don't know how any city staffer meets the standard of every person. Literally some people today said every person in the city being at the table. We just, that is a tough bar to, to hold. So I hear really clearly that we're not there and I, and I respect that. Um, I guess some of the questions, and I think this is kind of the question that Councilman Clark brought up, but I will just ask, if the majority of our neighboring cities and our peer cities have five people as their limit, why is it that they haven't melted down, right? What do we learn from that about who really wants to live in this environment? So that's a question for us to think about, right? We're governing based on mathematical possibilities, but in other cities that have had this for decades, they haven't had the meltdown. So what do we learn from that? I just said reflective question for us. A second question. Um, the issue of unrelated and related adults, is this council ready? We, we, we started this process, um, and we have families, 80%. Uh, Andrew, if you can put up the slide, I can't remember exactly what it was, but 2% of households have six or more folks and 80% of those folks are people of color. I think is what your slide said, is that right? So the question is, um, this is why the compromise was made that when the number got lowered, related folks were taken out. So this is an equity question. Is our council proposing, are the, is this committee proposing that we would make those households non-conforming? That we would zone them out of legality? Because that's one path. One path we can go to is, you know, that we treat all adults as adults. And so that's the outcome that we would be facing if we did that. So we could have that conversation. Um, I think, you know, uh, someone mentioned, uh, I think Councilman Flynn mentioned the idea of a, um, you know, who's checking on things? I think it's very reasonable to think about a permit here. Um, I think that, um, their question of how that permit doesn't become a barrier for these families, right? If, if 80% of the families that are in this size category are, are black and Latinx, and then they have a permit that they have to go through. What are the equity issues in that permit, right? Um, in terms of fire suppression and, you know, we want them to be safe, but we also know that code requirements can sometimes cause burdens. So I am really interested in exploring whether a permit does get us to answering some of these concerns. It allows us to track how many folks are doing this, right? So I would love to engage with any members of this committee and with the staff on the possibility of how we could do a permit. But I just want us to ask the question, who do we put through the permit, right? And what are the equity questions there? The last thing I'll just comment on is, um, I think the really important questions that have been raised about community corrections, I do just want to correct one thing that Councilman Flynn said. It's not the case that any community correction provider can pop up in any location. They have to be approved by the city. We have an official veto on that. So if they chose a location that wasn't appropriate, we have a second bite at that apple. Zoning is only the first foundation. And then we have total control, 100% control. Now that is different than some of the other, um, provider types. Um, and so I guess, you know, the last thing I'll ask folks to take a look at, I don't know that it's in this presentation, but, um, maybe Andrew, you can share, um, is specifically as it relates to homelessness. I bet every council member on this body has heard requests about homelessness and what we can do more of. We have seen that residential shelter does bring more people into shelter than, um, the, the model that we had before of just overnight beds. Well, a whole bunch of our beds in the zoning code are non-conforming. I think, you know, I know you didn't want to give them time to answer, Councilman Flynn, but there is a really long answer about why we literally cannot do anything new or different on homelessness until this package passes because we have a whole bunch of beds that are non-conforming. We have facilities that could do better, but they're not allowed to renovate because they lose their non-conforming status if they do that. I think it's really important, Andrew, if we could pull out just those homeless slides and send them to folks and, and maybe make sure that they're uploaded by themselves for folks to see. I think that, so, so for me, the urgency question on that piece is one that I, I do, I agree. It's a ton of information. I hope we schedule you to come back again. And maybe we, you know, we talk through each of the themes we've talked about today. I think we should talk about a permit. I think we should talk about homeless shelters in particular and the challenges there. I think we should talk maybe about, um, some of the questions about metrics. The planning board had a great conversation about metrics. So if we pick three or four topics, I guess my question to the committee is, would we be open to having the staff come back as soon as they can to go in further depth on those things? Um, while we try to solve the problems that folks have raised, we won't be able to turn the clock back. And I think if the only way that we make change in the city is to turn the clock back, then, then we'll be saying to our residents that we're going to leave you with the most archaic zoning code for three more years. I just, we, we are where we are and I don't think turning the clock back is a realistic ask. But if we can start to methodically work through the problem solving, I guess that's the invitation I would give to this committee. We can take those problems back to communities. Um, if new folks need to be at the table, but let's keep including the folks who have been testifying and have been participating, who have been in communities of color. I don't want to devalue them just because, um, they may not have been on one particular group. But I think if we have those sets of problems and we take them back and we interact, I'd like us to methodically think about working through some of these challenges. So, um, I appreciate all the really good dialogue. I know that this is tough. It's been tough on council members. It's been tough, it's been tough on folks who learned that they're living illegally and now have code enforcement at their door. It's tough on them too. And I, I just think they don't have a voice in this committee. So I just want to bring that up because some folks have gotten that call in the last two weeks. And they've gotten it, um, in the middle of a pandemic when some of them are out, out of work. And so, uh, that's another piece of the urgency that I just think needs to be spoken for the record. It doesn't mean that we got it right this time. It doesn't mean that this package, um, is perfect, but it does mean that there are some people's lives who are impacted by our failure to, you know, move forward and continue working on it. So I, I'm a little concerned by the calls that might say start over because I don't think folks with code enforcement at their door in the middle of a pandemic deserve to be, um, sorry. I don't think they deserve to, uh, you know, pay the price for flaws in a process. I believe they deserve a right to live with dignity in our city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Knit. And I see we've got Black, Cashman and Flynn. Um, I, I want to, since we're at noon and this was a briefing, uh, I'm going to hold off on those comments just because I, I feel good as a chair saying everyone got the opportunity to just to chime in once. Um, just a, a couple of, uh, things I would like to share as a loody chair. This was a, this was originally supposed to be an action item. Um, but there were concerns by several members of council that this needed more discussion. And so I, I spoke with CPD and they were absolutely understanding of that. And though they did ask if there was a way that there could be a future date for a potential action item. So that is right now, and I, I emphasize right now, that is October 6th, where we have the entire loody just for this one item. Um, I, I do think there's a lot of follow-up that I, I, I know, Andrew, you said you were taking notes. Your team will get back together. Um, and if, if that changes, and I will, you do not have to answer that now, but if you believe that, yes, you would still like a, a, a action decision on the 6th, that's, that's, that's absolutely fine. As I look at the calendar and as I was looking over at Zach, um, obviously next week's a holiday, so there's no committee. The 15th is, The 15th is booked, the 22nd is booked. On the 29th, we do have about, we have three action items that will probably take up about 45 minutes. And Councilwoman Sandoval is, her, Jafee Park, absolutely deserves the time that she has worked. So, but I think that'll take about 45 minutes. So we'll have an additional 45 minutes that we can bring this back for a second discussion or an update if CPD is aware of that. You do not have to, you do not have to speak to that now. But I do appreciate Councilwoman Kneec's idea of we can kind of parse those out. If that, if you want to do that, I want to offer that up to CPD. And then once again, the following Tuesday, the 6th, is wide open. So if it's, we can move that forward. So I want to kind of give someone, give the group and people that are watching what's going to move forward. We know on October 6th, it can be an action item if CPD and sponsors still want to move that. But I'm offering up to 29th to come back for a conversation just to see if there's any changes or any feedback that you, and ask for a public comment. Certainly don't wait until that time to reach out to council members about that. So I want to make sure if anything I said just made sense to the committee members, council as a whole, how I, I want, I know because council members are saying, hold. I don't have that. I don't believe I should do that as a committee chair. I want to get people to know if the committee wants to hold it, that's our prerogative. But as a committee chair, I just don't want to do that. So there will be something at the latest on October 6th with the current plan unless there are any changes. So let me make sure, I look at the participants, make sure I didn't say anything crazy. Cashman, you gave me the thumbs up. So are we, any questions about what I just said? Nobody's talking? Okay. Flynn, wait. Do you have something, Flynn, about what I just said, not to rebut?
Oh, not at all. I think, I think you're targeting the six for action. I think Councilwoman Kneec actually made a great case for breaking up this package into digestible parts and looking at the ones that are more emergent than others and handling them separately and moving them forward. After all, we broke out tiny homes months ago and dealt with that separately. So I think CPD should consider coming to us with digestible bites. The things that are more urgent, bring them to us first. That's what I would suggest.
Go ahead, go ahead, Robin. Go ahead, Robin. I knew you.
My recommendation was not to broke up the package. The homeless shelter piece is urgent and it is in the res care piece. People with code enforcement at their door because they have four adults living together in a six-bedroom home, that's in the household living piece. They're both equally urgent. They require discussion. Each piece, like the deeper dive in the discussion. I just want to clarify, my recommendation wasn't that one is more urgent than the other. They both have urgent things and they're totally different. And so I believe that you talk through each piece individually, right? That's my suggestion is you tackle, where is there places that this could be evolved or moved or adjusted to get to the concerns? That was my suggestion. I just wanted to clarify in case.
No, Councilwoman, I, I heard that.
I just said you inadvertently made a case for it.
All right. Thank you all. So here's what we're going to do. So we will, we will write in pencil the 29th for an update, for another briefing. But must, I would like to give you 45 minutes, but we do have three other action items that we have to vote on that day. And the October 6th is wide open. If CPD still wants an action item, you will have that entire day for, if that's, if that's what you want to move forward. Great. Hey, this was a great discussion, Andrew. Thank you all so much. Colleagues, thank you all so much. Any consent, we have several consent items, loody members. If there's something you want to pull off of consent, please reach out to Zach or myself. Nothing else before this body. This committee is adjourned.